Reacted to that.
Who sent this money? Go see your name?
Yeah? To be that speedy. Thank you, but that's speedy.
The only thing is, we have changed points.
I do not, and I can't live without the dollar.
I owe a dollar to coin.
I can live without the dollar. I just, you know that-
I don't have another dollar either.
I figured this was a speedy reminder for you, Graham, for you. I couldn't, you know, anyway, perfect, thank you.
Now, that surprised me. TJU didn't surprise me.
No, that one didn't surprise me.
And there was another quarter, Bob. It was a Boston College kid.
Okay, my message to Commissioner Gilry, hey, she's trying to come, so we could, now what do we do? Is the owner of the business? I'm sure that number happens to you.
I saw one rep, and I'm surprised we haven't seen more. Was it last year, we told them, hang me to get into the portal, and didn't get picked. And of course, they are not obligated, I mean, schools, if they can't go in, they're obligated to take them back.
I'm not even sure whether I'm going to be fit enough to come next Tuesday.
I'm wondering.
I was wondering that. Yeah, Pat said that.
What did they say about how-
Oh, weeks.
Larry surprised me, there was one year left.
I'm sorry, Tom.
Yeah, so certainly no bending, no lifting, but they said after a few days, you might feel a bit better.
So I think you just play it by ear.
I'll play it by ear.
If you feel on on Tuesday morning, if you-
I'll let everybody know. Yeah, I'll let you know.
Don't worry about it. You've got to take care of yourself. That's what we talked about, that's the most important.
Thanks.
Seems like we're getting a little bit of feedback.
Yeah.
His name was coming up from Nebraska in some of these open-
I'm not hearing from Commissioner Gilry.
Maybe he fell asleep.
I hope she's okay.
I'm wondering if she's in the swing.
Possibly.
How's that, Jack? I think that's probably better.
That's better. That's better.
I didn't think the speech I heard.
There she is.
Boo boo!
Yeah, I'll get her, bring her my own piece.
I wrote his sign, and it's like, this is going to be the part.
I'm comfortable with what she's saying, maybe that.
I'll see how that works.
Get me nothing, just hear me already. Alrighty then. We ready to rock and roll? Alrighty. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call tonight's meeting to order. We are assembled here for the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners Agenda Meeting. And it is Monday, December 5th, it is 5:33 PM, and we are assembled in the Commissioners' Boardroom of City Hall. If you do have electronic devices, I ask that you please turn them off or mute them. And the business for the day is to set the agenda for the Tuesday, December 13th, regular session. And so with that, we turn to the agenda. Yes, ma'am? Okay, so the city manager would like to add, let's see, where is it in the? Uh, D, no, I'm sorry, C. A, B, okay, I'm getting bigger. Okay, B under five, under city business, five B, the city B as in boy. The city manager has requested that we move that item to today's agenda. And so if that is agreeable, I need somebody to make a motion to adjust today's agenda by moving. We have a motion by Commissioner Bullock. Any discussion there, too? Okay, all in favor of moving item five B, which is to consider approving city staff to request assistance from the North Carolina League of Municipalities to assist the city in finding an interim city manager. All those in favor signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, and that motion carries. And so with that, I propose that we consider that motion first before we move to the rest of, to setting the agenda for next week. And hang on, I'm writing myself a note. And with that, I'll read the entire item. And that is to consider approving city staff to request assistance from North Carolina League of Municipalities for the city to find an interim city manager. City manager Alan Thornton's last day with the city is December 30th. Unfortunately, the city has not yet hired a replacement, therefore, we request that the board approve requesting staff assistance from the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Your attachment five B is the staff report alone, which I think pretty much sums up what I just said. And the recommended action is that the board approve allowing city staff to request assistance from the League of Municipalities to find an interim city manager. And just for clarification's sake, I believe the manager, and he can certainly add to this, has already reached out to the league, but they did request that there be a formal motion and vote on the books to that effect. So with that, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
That was Commissioner Bridges.
Before we move on, could I amend this, just to state that we, in the interim, that if in the event somebody local, you know, that we, somebody local come before us, that they also be considered.
So what you're requesting, Commissioner Bridges has made a motion to request assistance from the League of Municipalities, and you are just requesting that the board consider saying, yes, request help from the league, and also be open to the potential if somebody local arises, that the board had that option to consider them as well.
Yes, yes.
I agree with that.
Commissioner Bridges, are you open to that amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. A further discussion on that? With there being no discussion, all in favor of Commissioner Bridges' motion with the adjustment added by Mayor Protem? All in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Thornton.
Thank you.
Now, staff, we appreciate that. And now we move forward to the rest of the agenda. And so we will acknowledge the standard opening remarks. And, okay, I just need clarification for my own edification. So Jenny Wilson has moved away from Oxford United Methodist Church. She has retired from there. Right. And is working here, I'm assuming, on a temporary basis. On an interim basis, because I was totally confused at the last meeting when Reverend Stausmus showed up. And it was like, wait a minute, we're not that, but so-
But it's right.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, I appreciate that clarification. Okay, so we're all straight on the opening part. Morgan Renn, Employee of the Month, Lieutenant Stockwell, recognizing Officer Caitlin Elliott as Officer of the Year. And Commissioner Bridges, are you interested in working with me on those two items since they both fall under public safety?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. And then we have recognizing the retirement of Marvin Kelly with the Street Department. That's great. And Commissioner Bullock, would you be willing to work with me on that one?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And Mr. Thornton, do we happen to know how long Marvin Kelly has worked with this city?
I don't know. Find out.
Okay, please. That would be great. If you could ask Melissa-
From 2015 to 2022.
Seven years. Okay, great. Great, okay, but maybe touch in with Melissa and ask her to send me anything she's got on him. That would be great. Ma'am, we will recognize your retirement. Okay, that's a big deal. Can make me a little sad.
Can I help you with that?
Yes.
I want a part of that, too.
Oh, that's good, I'm-
We're gonna have a metal detector. Tuesday before they come in.
No, but I have a duck machine lined up.
That is great.
It would be an honor.
That's awesome. Perfect, thank you, Mayor Protem. Engineering update by our city engineer, that's great. Financial update by the finance director, great. And so, actually, so I have a question, because I think we had discussed maybe rotating and maybe only doing the finance update once a quarter, and then the other two times. So, does that work for you?
Yeah.
So we'll listen, so we have the city engineer, we'll let Mr. Ong off the hook, and maybe have him come in January? Does that work? Okay, great.
Who's going to replace, who's going to go in his place this?
The city engineer, E. Engineering update.
Oh, okay, I got you.
So it'll be a different department-
I got you.
And then periodically, finance, if that works. Okay? Yes, sir.
January would be a good time to bring in our auditorium as well, just in the event that we give an auditorium right now.
Okay, so that works out great. Super, thank you. Okay, maybe I'm-
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
It's something that I've been thinking about for a while. Is there a reason that we do delegations after public comment? Because in my head, you know, sometimes the public comment can bring the mood down.
It certainly did, you know, it used to be kind of non-existent, but it's a new day.
Could we block those?
That's in-
We don't have to decide that now, but we don't have to decide that now, I just wanted to-
So I think it depends if delegations are, you know, like officers and so, you know, different staff that are coming in just for that. That gives them the option of coming and then exiting. Worth pondering. Do you all want to make a decision on that now, or do you want to ponder?
I think it's a good idea, actually, because sometimes the public comments can go on and on, and the delegations get left behind a bit late.
So-
Public comments, partly delegations.
Right, so move, oh, I see, yeah.
You see what I mean?
So moving the delegations ahead.
Swap two and three.
Yeah, you swap them, ma'am.
Okay.
That's great.
Yes. Okay, thank you. I was confused when I made my comments back to you.
So we're actually going to do that?
Yeah, I think so.
And that means that-
Is that consensus of the board?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you have any thoughts?
We're, no, no, I'm in total agreement.
Total agreement. Yeah, it was rough for them last time.
That way, that way the public can see the recognition of the delegates.
And people are leaving when we're doing-
Delegation, yeah.
Yep, yep. Excellent, thank you.
Then I calm down a little bit, too, if they sit here for an extra 10, 15 minutes.
You know, you know, it's a new day. That's all I have to say. I mean, it's important for people to feel comfortable coming to the third floor of City Hall to speak their mind. But it used to be that nobody ever came, so with the exception of maybe two. Excellent, thank you. Any other comments regarding that? Okay, moving forward, we have a public hearing to receive citizen input here on the closeout of the Community Development Block Grant. So this is from a grant that we received in 2019, and everything is completed. Will we also hear a report from you, Ms. Hart, before the public hearing?
I have a memo, a copy with the attachment for the board, so I have some of it.
Okay, um, we do not, do we, we don't have that yet?
No.
Okay. I mean, is it possible to see, is it correct that there's some before and after work?
That's what I'm saying.
Or is it not obvious in the before and after work, that, you know, the board can maybe see the houses that were worked on?
I'll see what I can get my hands on, and if not, before the public hearing, the government will.
Okay.
And I don't have a picture of myself.
Okay. But, you know, and we're advertising in the paper, right, so people will know. Okay, excellent. And am I correct that you've received another Community Development Block Grant recently? In the amount of?
Same amount, 50,000.
Okay, that's what I thought. Well, can we give her a round of applause?
Yes.
And that was to do the same type of work?
Same type of work.
Okay, excellent, well done. Thank you very much. Bravo. Okay, so we move forward to city business. Consider adopting the agenda and regular board meeting dates for 2023. And we have them here, and I have not, so, so we've got the two that are changed because of the holiday. This year, there were a couple of others that I think were inadvertently changed.
Yes.
Have you double-checked that we don't?
I fixed that.
We fixed that, so we don't have to worry about it for this coming year. Okay, excellent. Does any board, does anybody have any questions or comments on that item?
Nope.
Okay, we have already dealt with item B. And we move to item C, consider approving capital project ordinance for Car Lake Regional Water, or Car Lake Water Treatment Plant, including an expansion project. Consider approving the capital project ordinance for the expansion project. And we have attachment five C, which is that we were awarded $5 million. And am I correct that this also has a $500,000 principal forgiveness? No, yes?
Yes, it does.
It does. Can we, is it possible to put a little bit of that detail into the narrative on C so that we can capture the amount of that grant, and what is loan, and what is principal forgiveness? Great, thank you. Anybody have any questions on that item? Okay. We move forward to D, which is to consider approving a budget amendment for the Phase 5 Sewer Improvement Capital Water Project. The adopted budget didn't include Phase 5 Sewer Improvement Capital Water Project money. And the proposed budget amendment is showing with the attached budget amendment voucher that $500,000 for engineering design will come from fund balance. And when the city starts construction, DWI will reimburse the city for all engineering fees spent in advance and roll it into the $9.561 million grant and loan amount for the project. And I'm going to look at that. So we are doing a match of $500,000, and this says grant and loan. Do we know how much of that is grant, and how much of it is loan?
I couldn't say right off the top of my head, I'm sorry, ma'am.
No, that's, that's okay, but I feel like it's not an insignificant amount.
It's not.
And so it would, I just think it's always nice when we're able to publicize, so the public can hear how much is grant, so that they know what we're saving them, if that's possible. Does anybody have any questions on this item? No, okay, excellent. And then we have the consent agenda, November minutes, November finance report. Any comments? And so reminders, this Thursday, Snacks with Santa, Jingle and Mingle, what time does that start?
The fact that Sam were doing in the morning, 9 to 11, and then 4 to 6. And then the Jingle and Mingle, that makes sense. Okay, that's a difference.
Okay, so do we want to do, how about if we say Snacks with Santa with the, well, actually, the eighth is before our meeting anyway, so it's kind of null and void. Snacks with Santa, is that at Hicks Gym?
Yes.
Okay, so 9 to 11 and 4 to 6. And Jingle and Mingle is downtown, Alyssa, is that correct? And is that all day?
No, it's from 5 to 7.
5 to 7. Is there anything that the public needs to do regarding that?
Show up.
Just come and jingle and mingle. Okay, excellent, okay. And then we've got, yes, please come at 5:30, that's 5:30 to eight? Seven? Cheryl?
Seven.
Seven, 5:30 to 7 PM at Hicks Gym is public. Common and input on the comprehensive plan, really important for as many people as possible to be there, so please spread the word. They'll have the draft map, draft goals, strategies, lots of good stuff there, and that's at Hicks Gym. Offices will be closed at 22nd, 23rd, and 26th. And then, again, the New Year's Day, Monday, January 2nd. And then we meet back on the 3rd, and without our city manager. Will you be already out of Dodge? You'll still be in town?
Oh, so we can come in there and get you?
Sure.
I won't run around here and get you.
Good. I, you know, I don't want to go through too, withdraw too quickly.
I'll still be around.
I might walk down, down your high street. It's nice to see your truck in the driveway. Okay?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Well, just a question regarding the very first reminders that you talked about. Did we add one?
Did we separate it, Snacks with Santa from Jingle with me?
Okay, thank you.
That's right. Of course, it won't get repeated in the agenda, it won't be on the agenda because it will be after these take place.
Okay, so Snacks with Santa is at what time?
9 to 11 and 11.
And 4 to 6 in the afternoon.
And then again at 4 and 6?
4 to 6, yeah.
And 4 to 6, and then Jingle and Mingle?
It's downtown from 5 to 7, so that's to encourage some after-hours shopping and happiness. And if somebody wants to pick up wine, or cider, or something, and wander and shop, they'll be able to do that in our social district.
And it's all decent rate?
Yes.
Okay.
And including the public meeting for the comprehensive plan, so busy, busy Thursday.
But for you.
Okay, with that, Commissioner Gilry, do you have anything to add?
Nothing I really want to add, other than getting a lot of feedback from businesses downtown regarding the amount of dust and debris, and the constant having to clean. And today, I saw some folks blowing the sidewalks, but I couldn't identify who they were. And I said, oh, well, maybe that solves the problem that I've encountered, you know, was, do our people blow up the sidewalks? And, okay, I saw that this morning, and knew I was going to ask the question tonight, but I said, I don't know who's really doing this. And the other question was, and it sounds interesting, but I understand the issue. Power washing their building, I mean, some of the dust off of it, it really was pretty bad. Their windows, and this, that, and the other, and the amount of mess tracked into their businesses. How often do we do that?
When you have all those people downtown, you're going to have a lot of dust, you know?
Well, the issue is, the construction of the, the street being torn up is what's creating this problem.
Right.
So I think the buildings are private property, the sidewalks are the city's responsibility. The buildings are private property, so if somebody is power washing them, I guess that would be-
Well, power washing are just power, I mean, just a water hose. I mean, we're not talking cleaning them. I'm just saying, the amount of, anyway, I understood what they were saying to me, and I'm thinking, yeah, that is nasty. But anyway, I mean, and it's unavoidable, it is, and it is where we are, but I just thought that was interesting.
Well, I think, I think things are better. College Street was, was a dilemma for a lot of merchants down there, but now that we have a nice patch, the patch is going to where the median starts, is that correct? So we got the patch has tampered down, the really bad dust and gravel on the first portion of the street. And the second portion of the street has a nice, solid, steady thing of ABC, and it's in the middle and away, so nobody should be driving on it. And that will be in the new year, Mr. Thornton, when they come to do the median?
Well, Maine and the Williamsboro section to Gilliam is being paved this week.
Right.
So, weather permitting, that'll cut down on a lot of that. But College, we still have the sewer line installation that's necessary while they're creating the median as well. But I think the bulk of the construction activity is now moved out of downtown proper.
Okay.
And moving down College Street.
Thankfully.
And should eliminate a lot of that.
Yep, yep. And forgive me, I'm going to go to Commissioner Toby, but I'm afraid I'm going to forget. But my husband and I were walking, when we do our walk, we're coming down Spring Street. It looks like they've done a great job painting most lines, but they haven't painted the lines for stopping. Which is kind of dangerous, it seems to me. It's got other plans for-
I hope so, because I noticed today that a couple of other streets that they resurface, especially the one going across the railroad, they've, they've left the railroad insignia off, haven't redone it, haven't created the white line before in the railroad tracks either.
I just saw that.
So, yeah, we'll be having that conversation with them about completing it.
Okay, that's great. Are you set, Commissioner, or another thing?
Well, there seems to be an inconsistency on these bike lanes, too. Some of them are vacant. And then, I initially thought maybe some of them were for cars to park on the side of the street, then a bike lane, and then the cars. And then I understand that we are going to share some, cars and bikes. But, but we have seemingly a major inconsistency in how those lines are, and where they are, and who's doing what, where we're in. And I can't figure out, anyway, it is, I mean, has anyone else noticed that?
Yeah, it's confusing. It can be confusing, it can be confusing.
And I think, you know, we've had some comments go directly to the city engineer, and I was actually going to meet somebody in the community who has very strong opinions about it, to get, you know, to actually walk it and, and hear directly what-
Yeah, the newspaper article was helpful, but it didn't solve the problems that I was seeing. I mean, I'm like, okay, thank you, newspaper, but we still have some issues here.
So I think we're going to have more conversations about that.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, no, thank you. Commissioner Toby?
No, you stole my thunder, Madam Mayor, about the white lines, the stop lines. No, you're great, because I'm glad you mentioned it, I'm glad somebody mentioned it anyway. But it is, I, I think it's dangerous. You come up to a stop sign, where do you stop? At the sign, before the sign? The police would tell us where they want the, the actual line. There's quite a few missing, and I think it needs to be resolved as soon as possible, if we can. I'm sorry, Amy wasn't here.
Well, there is a punch list that is performed on municipal streets.
Right.
The DOT may do streets, so there's another issue.
And it's the DOT streets that are not getting done.
Typically, we're bugged until the point that something is done, or in the case of a few, we go out there and do it ourselves.
And I think Spring Street, the DOT, is very odd, because there's the spot coming off the roundabout down to the stop sign that is actually ours.
That's ours.
Yeah, that's right.
And then it starts again, and that particular, because it's not a stop sign that people are still used to, so I think the white line really reminds them that they need to stop. I think they're going to share another people's reason.
Yep, and I'm not sure that was included in the package. It may be something that we have to do, because initially, when we installed the four-way stop, we put the white line there.
Right.
So it may be something that city staff is going to wind up having to do.
I'm curious if we slowed down there any.
Yep. We also need to make sure that those bushes there stay cut back.
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly, that's right.
Because you come around that corner, and all of a sudden, down there it is.
And of course, apologies, I will not be here next week for the meeting, for the Commissioners' meeting. I'm having large surgery on that day.
Why did I think it was Thursday?
It's Thursday. I'm having the surgery Thursday, but I won't be fit.
Back on Tuesday.
I don't think so.
Okay, probably not, okay.
Well, we can zoom.
You can zoom? Yeah, right.
We'll keep you in our thoughts, and if you have strong opinions on any agenda items, shoot them to us.
I'd be high on drugs, I would think.
Don't send us no opinions, Neil. Let's not zoom.
They might be the best ones.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yeah, I don't have anything.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
Just a quick question. On my street, they're, they're working on the water, are they installing the new water?
On John Street.
Uh huh, the new water thing, anyways, a lot of work going on on the street. But they, where they're digging right at the water, they're leaving the ugliest piles in the- But they, where they're digging right at the water, they're leaving the ugliest piles in the yards, so you said we got a punch ticket, so.
Yep, yep, we have a punch list, and hopefully that'll be completed before we actually go out there and make it, do it before they get paid.
Okay.
That should be something that's done as they progress.
Yeah, and I, before I left, and I got pictures, if anybody wanna see it, I thought, they shouldn't leave this kind of mound.
Please send them to me.
Okay.
Please just send them to me.
Pictures, where's the thousand words? Especially if they say, no, we ain't doing that.
Oh, but I got you.
Uh, great, thank you for bringing that up. It's amazing how everybody has a different idea of what they understand in a contract. Is that it for you, sir?
Yes, that's, that's it.
Okay, Commissioner Bullock?
I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner Lumpkins?
I just wanted to thank everybody in the city that helped, you know, put the parade on, always to be successful. We had a very cool place.
Float was darling.
And the crowd, you know, the crowd was really something, so I was impressed.
It was, great, and the float, awesome, and I saw the float again in Creamworth's parade. I was with Commissioner Toby, and he was like, there goes our float, because he wasn't able to ride with us, was like, that's a must, looked great, it was wonderful. But, but I do think if we're going to persist with the no candy, certainly the vote for us was, we were kind of depressed. And so, if we do a float again in the future, we might have the float with, you know, Oxford Mayor and Commissioner, that we can be walking and giving out candy, if we can do that.
Yeah, I saw a lot of people doing that.
Yeah, because, because we were looking in all of these disappointed eyes and out of hands.
Like.
We gave a lot of candy away Saturday.
What?
We gave a lot of candy away Saturday.
We, we did, we.
We did.
John and I threw out a lot of candy.
My arm is still sore, throwing candy.
A cream or a loud candy?
Oh yeah.
Cream or impotna?
I came back through there Saturday.
And then you guys go cream or butna, give out candy for the folks in Oxford.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Yep, yep. Didn't, didn't stop them from coming out.
They were out.
Okay, Mr. Thornton, anything from you?
No, I think that's about it, I wanna say thank you to everybody for the parade, I wasn't here. But I understand it went off and went very well, so I wanna thank Alyssa especially for it being her first time in coordinating that Christmas parade and lighting of the green, so thank you to her and to everyone else who participated and provided public safety and all those things to make it come off in a safe fashion. Also, I wanna say thank you to the board members that came to the Thanksgiving luncheon and employee appreciation event. Thank you for coming down and serving the meal and participating and being a part of that event, so I appreciate that as well.
Pope House wants to thank the board for the food that was delivered after the services, they said thank you, thank you, thank you.
And they've got a lot going on.
Yes.
At Pope House, pretty great, yeah, absolutely wonderful, great, great meal, great parade, lots of praise and from everyone, I also wanna thank Steve and his staff because Thanksgiving Day, apparently, Stu Hinman did not realize that the people that were supposed to ask for a parade permit from the city had not done that. And you and your folks came out at the last minute and secured the streets and did all of that for the turkey trot on Thanksgiving morning, which was just huge. And so, thank you very much for that, yes, sir?
Yeah, one more thing, I wanna say thank you to the Police Department, if you noticed in Thursday's paper the arrests that have been made in a number of the recent shootings, we hope there's more of that coming very shortly. Take care of some of that stupidity, for lack of a better term, and put some finality on that and remove some of the individuals creating that type of havoc in the city of Oxford from the streets of Oxford.
Yes.
So thank you to the Police Department for all their hard work.
I think a round of applause.
Well done.
And I would just, this is not related to the, are you all set?
I'm good.
Anything from you, Mr. Burnett?
I'm ready.
Okay, and I just wanna add a quick, this doesn't have anything to do with the city of Oxford, but as it happens, my son's family lives in Southern Pines, so they have fallen victim to this, what my daughter-in-law says, I don't consider this vandalism, I consider it an act of domestic terrorism. They have been without power since seven o'clock Saturday night, there are over 40,000 people in Moore County without power due to this. And we think about how upsetting it has been for our vendors to deal with some days when the streets have been blocked. This is prime season, there are no stores open, and downtown Southern, they can't get gas, they can't, people, some people are opening with candles to sell, but they can only accept cash, people have to drive out of the county to get cash, because no bank machines. It's, it's just horrific. So let us be grateful, as I know we all always are, and, and, I mean, this, and this is in half of what they're dealing with in Ukraine, where it's a, God bless, a war zone all over the place, but let's think that hopefully they will catch the perpetrators and bring them to justice, because this kind of behavior is just not acceptable when you endanger and put so many people at risk in their livelihoods and so on, so anyway, that's my thought. And with that, I know Commissioner Bridges and others would like to get to the swearing-in ceremony for the sheriff and others, so is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Protown, any discussion? All in favor of adjourned signals by saying aye?
Aye.
Any votes? How about it?
I'm gonna sit right here.
I'm gonna sit around. I'm gonna sit around. Thank you, Teresa, that'd be good, that'd be good, get rid of that one, sure.